Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I will call to order the August 12th meeting of the Slayton County Board of Commissioners. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Moni Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Annie Grievous.
Here.
Commissioner Roger Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner James Wees.
Here.
Commissioner Joe Hay.
Here.
If you're able to stand, please do so and join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. At this time, we'll move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on county government, limited to three minutes and which is not on the agenda today. Are there any members of the public to wish to speak? Please state your name and address.
Rosemary Mice, Salina, Kansas.
Good morning.
I just wanted to invite you all to, and the public, to the Granny Brigade's August meeting, and which would be Tuesday night, August the 19th, at 7:00 at the Carver Center. And this month, we are having nonprofit organizations. We put out an email to quite a few of our organizations here in town, and we got feedback from four of them that would like to attend our meeting. And those organizations are Salina Shares, which is Debbie Rivers, Birthright, Brenda Miller, Salina Senior Center, Rosie Walters, and Salina Grace and Rescue Mission, Chad Young. And we encourage the community to come and support these organizations. I know that this is a good time since you guys are cutting some of their funds. Need to come and hear about what they are all about and what they need as far as volunteers and supplies or anything that they need for their organization. So please come out to the Carver Center next week, Tuesday night at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Morning.
Jim Vent, 1115 Andrew Avenue, Salina, Kansas.
Hey.
My comments don't relate to any agenda items.
Okay.
And I have my notes here to keep me on track so I don't try to reinvent the Serpent on the Mountain. So what I wanted to talk about was a matter that I think is really important, and that is the unfortunate murder of these two police officers in Kansas this past summer. That I take that very, very seriously because I am done in any way, shape, or form anti-police when my neighbor's house guest is out in the yard having a drunken, screaming fett at 11 o'clock at night and trips off around from a heavy caliber pistol. I call the cops. So absolutely need, I guess I'm cynical enough about human nature to think that we need armed policemen out there. So three years ago, I suspect that you're, I don't know if you folks remember it, but I was down there. I suspect your manager remembers it. I was parked out on Fairchild Road, legally parked, eating my ice cream, reading my book, and two Slayton County deputies came up and driver's license, proof of insurance, registration. And, you know, I said, I'm not going to comply to that because this is not a valid Terry stop. So eventually, I had to enlist the assistance of your manager to get the Slayton County Sheriff to allow me to watch the video, camcording. So what I saw there was that the, well, I also was told that I was detained and not free to go because I was obstructing. Well, I knew that obstructing only applies to someone who's obstructing a police officer from conducting their legal duties. And invalid Terry stops are not legal duties of the police. So eventually, I got to see the videos with your helm, and I saw that the deputy lied to his superior. They called the captain out to the scene, and he just, he just said, "We're going to leave," and so he just left. So, but in the video, clearly, the deputy was lying to his superior. So that I also take very seriously because that undermines the rule of law. And so I don't know, because it's personnel matter, I don't have any business to know, what was done about that. But later on, maybe about a year later, I was called into jury duty, and I saw that the same deputy was at the courthouse transporting prisoners back and forth. So evidently, he had been relegated to that job. So the reason I'm concerned about that is because that, I think, undercuts people's respect for the law. And that, people get, people that are mentally unstable, drunk, drugged, who knows, are heavily armed, and they get sucked into this cycle of violence. And that's what leads to police officers getting murdered. So it's insane.
One minute left.
That's insane behavior. So I think the failure of the sheriff to fire that guy will lead to this lawsuit that's, you folks are currently involved. And I'll bet you dollars to donuts that you will lose that lawsuit because that was conduct by a sheriff's deputy that was egregiously violent. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time. Anyone else?
Norman Manles, Salina. Jim touched on a subject. The Second Amendment, the people shall have sufficient arms and ammunition to protect themselves from those that would harm them. George Washington. We should not be asking law enforcement to provide protection for ourselves. Protect yourself. You're entitled to have the, you have the right to have a firearm. Don't ask law enforcement to do it. Take care of business yourself. The Second Amendment.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we have some scouts that are in the audience today. They're working on their merit badge for their eagle. And it's a citizenship and a community merit badge. And I'd just like to recognize Jack Jarvis, Mason Leonard, and Luke Workington. And let's see, though, it's Carter Workington and Colton Workington for working on that. And then having Nicole Leonard bring the boys in. This is, like I said, Troop Two here in Salina, Kansas, First Presbyterian Church, the scout troop that I belong to and very proud of, and one of the oldest scout troops west of the Mississippi. So thank you, boys, for coming in and get everything you can from the meeting. That way there, we can, we can check that merit badge off. So thank you for coming in. And Nicole, thank you for bringing them in.
Yes. Congratulations on your merit badge, and hopefully that you do learn something from this. I don't care what I say. Okay. Anyone else? Anything else? At this time, we will move into our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, and approval of payroll. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 5-0. We will move on to action items.
Recovery Month proclamation, Justin Keane, peer mentor, CKF Addiction Treatment Center.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mental health and addiction affect communities nationwide. With commitment and support, people can and do recover. Each September, Recovery Month works to promote and support the emergence of a strong and proud recovery community in celebrating the dedication of community members and service providers across the nation who make recovery in all its forms possible. The theme of National Recovery Month is recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community. A reminder to people in recovery and those who support them that recovery belongs to all of us. With inclusive treatment, access, support, and understanding, we can eliminate barriers to services as well as broaden our understanding that the road to recovery is nonlinear. We advocate that there are many pathways to long-term recovery, and by understanding and supporting each unique journey, we only grow that much stronger. Each year, we ask for you all to be a part of the solution by promoting education around substance use and providing support systems for those struggling with addiction. We can create a healthier community that supports not only recovery and prevention, but helps save lives. Change starts with each one of us, and together, we can make a difference in the lives of those around us. For the above reasons, I am asking the citizens of the city of Salina to join me in celebrating this September as National Recovery Month.
And this is Slayton County, not the city of Salina. But anyway.
I apologize.
No, I just wanted to say, yeah. But do you have any activities or what is happening?
Yeah. So this, in September, we are honoring Dawn Green, and Saturday, September 6th, from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Elm location in Salina.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Slayton County Commission proclaim September as Recovery Month.
Second, that motion.
We have a motion and a second to proclaim September as Recovery Month. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can I have a proclamation for you? Good job.
Oh, hey, sir.
Yes.
Here.
Oh.
Smile.
Thank you. You bet.
Thanks for coming.
Congratulations.
You bet.
Next item?
Reductions to the 2026 proposed budget, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
First of all, I'd like to move we untable RFA 2025-110 for discussion and possible action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to untable resolutions, 2025-110. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. So last Tuesday, this item was before you, and you tabled it for further consideration. We scheduled a study session on Friday, the 8th, and had some discussions. So this is the follow-up to that item. So I have a revised recommendation that's before you today, which represents a reduction of $976,357 from my July 1st recommended county budget for 2026. That is a reduction of 1.404 mils from the originally proposed levy. That brings the mil levy down to 40.167, which is just slightly above the current mil levy of 40.112. It would be an impact of $1.26 annually for a $200,000 value home. There are a number of, I won't go through everything, but there are a number of reductions that are new that I took to get us to this level, and that did not get discussed on Friday, so I'll just go through those briefly. Those are to reduce the amount of spending on SS5 Road Rock at Roden Bridge. I did discuss that with Roden Bridge Administrator, Darren Fischel. The second is to reduce funding for an ambulance for the city of Salina by $14,000. Their current estimate is that that ambulance would cost $289. They had included a little bit of an inflator because they think the prices will adjust in January. I had put that 303 in there, reducing that to 289. If the cost does go up, we do have sufficient funding and equipment reserved to make up that difference. The third change would be to eliminate funding for tuition reimbursement in the Employee Benefits Fund, the amount of $10,000. Then dropping membership in a couple of different organizations and moving to a lower level of dues for the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. We've been at the $4,000 dues level. The city of Salina is at the $2,000 dues level. Going down to match them saves us a couple thousand dollars. Then not reducing any funding for the Salina Economic Development Organization, but keeping them flat. You may recall, in the proposed budget, there was a slight increase for them, which was permitted because other funding in economic development had gone away. The Appraisers Office has offered up a $1,000 reduction in their vehicle mileage based on their recent trends and the fact that the state keeps reducing their workload. And then a small reduction in the transfer to debt service based on the cash available in that fund. So that totals $83,570 in additional reductions. Conversely, the commission on Friday did discuss restoration of some items. So the current proposal now does include $10,000 each for Salina Grace, the Salina Area United Way for Child Care, and the, I'm trying a blank on the third one.
For the tire.
Tire, thank you. The Slayton County Farm Bureau for tire disposal. Includes those three things and acceptance of one of the budget appeals, which we'll discuss in the next item. So I'd be happy to discuss anything else that's in the proposal or answer any other questions, but that's what I have to present today.
Okay. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 2025-.
Any comments from the public? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Linda Salem, 77 Sastenson Road. I spoke at the last commission meeting, and I just want to thank you. I know that it was, you had to find time for a special meeting, you had to relook at numbers. It's a great deal of work, and I guess it's just gratifying as a Slayton County resident to know that if we show up and express some concerns, that you listen and you at least take those into consideration. So again, just want to thank you and show my appreciation.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Johnny Keller, Salina. I'll be nice, Joe. That's a joke we have. I want to, I want to give the county, all of you, I want to give you guys just a slap on the back in praise. You guys are working together to cut tax where you can, to cut expenditures where you can. And I know no one likes to do that because you're trying to take care of your organization, which is the county. But when I'm talking to young people myself in the area, and they're telling me how hard it is to live, how hard it is to buy or even rent. And the average two-bedroom rent in Salina is $1,280 a month for rent, and the average couple spends $700 a month on groceries and utilities. So you guys are doing what I wish the city would do, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Christina Smalls, Salina Area United Way. I just wanted to thank you all for reconsidering and seeing the need for the childcare and helping us out with that. It's greatly appreciated. I don't wish to be in any of your shoes, having to deal with the budget and the cutting. So I just wanted to take a minute and show my appreciation and say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry I jumped the gun in there.
No problem.
Again, I approve, move that we approve RFA 2025-110 as presented.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-110 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item.
Decision on budget appeals with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
As I referenced in the prior item, this was discussed on Friday in the context of the overall budget, and so it is currently staff's recommendation that the commission accept the appeal from the county clerk's office for an additional position in elections and deny the appeal from Human Resources for a payroll position at this time.
Do we have any comments? Anyone from the public?
Good morning, Commissioners. Marilyn Lemaire, HR Director for Slayton County. I do want to take one final time to make an urgent appeal that is before you today before you decide to grant or deny the two appeals requesting additional staff. From an HR perspective, payroll is not only critical, but it also has become more significant, complex in the recent years. Our team is currently operating at full capacity, and the increasing strain is making it difficult to maintain essential day-to-day operations. Payroll support is the highest priority for this additional support. As I emphasized in my original appeal, every employee in Slayton County sees their paychecks, but few are aware of what goes on before and after their paychecks hit their accounts. We are grateful for another office that has been able to spare a staff member for two mornings a week to provide a very small source of relief, but that help does depend on their workload and the remaining level in their office. If that workload changes, that support disappears for us. Additional HR position is sustainable to maintain the service levels that employees and potential employees expect. If both appeals cannot be approved, and if only one can be approved due to budget constraints, I strongly urge you that the allocation be equal for both departments, and funding begin mid-year 2026 for both departments. Alternatively, I request that one or both positions be approved mid-year using unspent salary funds from vacant positions across county departments. Thank you for your consideration.
Do we have any other comments? Anyone from Zoom? Okay. I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Did we have anything from Zoom?
No. Seeing no motion? No.
I'd like to say, Marilyn, I appreciate that, and personally, I know the need is there. And you've given us a, an option to make that happen for both. It's kind of the 12th hour, but it, I think it deserves at least some conversation amongst the five of us whether or not that's viable.
I think, as we talked about last Friday, I think that I was comfortable, well, I was part of the group that didn't necessarily want to go forward with it, but I was in agreement with the Group 3-2 that we would go ahead with the county clerk's position and maybe half year, if money was available, look at Marilyn's position. And I'm still agreeable to that, if money is available. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RFA 2025-115 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-115 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 3 to 2. Next, informational items.
We have the Expo Weed Farm August update with David Flattery, livestock and expo director.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So this interval is June 2025 through August of 2025. On the Expo Center side, we had 67 event days during that time. We set up tear-down events. We just got done hosting the Tri Rivers Fair. We painted the inside arena walls in Ag Hall, fixed some arena railings, filled out, filled our last position on the Expo Center side, continued training the Expo Administrative Aid. We helped the weed department with spraying and inspecting. We helped the weed department with spraying and inspected when needed, patched some panels in Barn One. Donations are starting to come in from the letters. We've had two so far. We installed displays in Barn Two for the sponsorship program, that's part of the TVs that we had gotten from the old jail. We got our forklift back from Kenty Quip. We helped in the office as needed. On the weed department side, so this just changed, it said we're looking for a weed applicator. We just filled that position. They do start this week. Applicator and the director attended monthly meetings. They've sprayed the right-ofways, informed landowners of noxious weeds on their properties. We handled noxious weed complaints, the state and local, talked with landowners and the public about control of noxious weeds. We re-inspected the muss thistled areas, spot-sprayed Johnson grass, and we are continuing to spot and spray that right now. They also helped in the office when they were needed, repaired some plumbing on the weed spray truck. We also repaired some on one of the mule tanks. Fred Pryor training. The director and applicator attended summer training for credit hours, and then we helped the Expo Center when needed.
Hey, can I excuse, excuse me for just a second, but what is the Fred Pryor training? What does that include?
So there's different kinds of training on that. You can take, like, supervisor courses, you can take office training.
Okay.
Just different kinds to keep everybody up to date.
Gotcha. Thank you.
On the farm, we had quite a few thistles out there this year, so we did pull the heads and sprayed the thistles, re-repaired broken wire on the south side of the pasture. County grounds are out for bid currently, and they will be opened up next Monday. And then we installed some posts on the east side of the pasture. In the future, coming up on the Expo Center side, we're going to continue to set up and tear down upcoming events, patchwork inside an ag hole with mortar. We're going to ongoing training for the new staff, paint some of the walls in Ag Hall after we get them patched and fixed. We will continue to help in the office when needed, and the Expo will also help on the weed department as needed, if needed. On the weed side, cross out the first one, we just got an applicator. We will start doing the state inspections late September, early October. We'll start doing fall spraying next month, and then we're going to continue to spray Johnson grass, continue handling the noxious weed complaints. We're also going to help out at the Expo Center when needed, maintenance on vehicles and the spray equipment. We will also continue with site inspections. We'll help the office as needed, and some staff will continue the Fred Pryor training. On the farm, we're open bids for the county grounds on August 18th. We'll start negotiation bids for the fence on the south side or the east side, and then we will also send out Oliver Hag checks to the schools. That just got completed last week. Budget-wise, the Expo budget, I had budget used 46.87. As of last Friday, we were right at 52%. Noxious weed department side had 48.26. We were at 57% Friday. Weed capital outlay remaining balance is $87,587.54. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Quick question I have is that, and it's been a while since I've been out there, if you're going out for negotiation bids for a new fence on the south side or the east side, do both of those fences need to be replaced to keep?
Yeah, so on the, on the east side, I'm not really going to go after that yet, because depending on who gets, who wins the bid, there is some farmers that own the property right next to it, they are willing to pitch in and cover their share to do the whole mile instead of just half.
Okay, I just.
So that's why I put south or east, because it, the south side, there is quite a few. I think we've put, we've probably put about 30 posts in already, but it does need new wiring throughout, at least four of the five strings.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Nothing.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Commissioners' comments?
I don't have any. Thank all the public and everyone for showing up, though. Next. I don't have any announcements at all.
I have an announcement. So the revenue neutral rate, or the notice of estimated taxes, went out last Wednesday, and so everyone should have received those in the mail already. If you have not, please contact our office. We had a couple of people say they didn't receive theirs, so just want to make sure that everybody was able to get theirs, and we'll resend that out if you didn't get it. So we just want to make sure everyone got it and is able to attend those hearings if they choose to.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move adjourn.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you.